Nuestro tema es el poder congresista versus el poder ejecutivo. Quiero comenzar por daros un ejemplo de poder congresista que no es muy conocido. Pero para terminarlo, creo que se ha dicho que en teoría el Congreso podría reducir la salario del presidente en dos por ciento, hacer una venta de la Casa Blanca, reducir el personal del presidente a un secretario y limitarlo a responder a las llamadas personales, lo que te da una idea del extenso poder congresista. De hecho, el Congreso hizo algo en ese sentido cuando Tomás Jefferson asumió el cargo. El Congreso fue... Adams tenía un establo de caballos que se proporcionaba por la Treasury Federal y el Congreso ordenó que esos caballos fueran vendidos y le dijo a Jefferson que si quería transporte por sus caballos. Así que esa pequeña historia será ampliada por nuestro primer orador y voy a presentar a los oradores en el orden en el que van a presentarse. Y nuestro primer orador es el juez Edith Jones de la Corte Fifth, quien ha estado en la Corte desde, ¿cuándo?, 1985, ¿es correcto? Y fue juez general durante un período de tiempo. Y luego, nuestro próximo orador será David Rifkin, quien es un socio de la empresa Baker &amp; Hostetler y co- líder de la práctica nacional de apelación de la empresa. Ha publicado cientos de artículos en el Wall Street Journal, el Washington Post, el New York Times y demás. Y de hecho, este es tu artículo más reciente, creo, ¿no es cierto, David? En el Wall Street Journal de ayer. Y voy a leerles el comienzo, lo cual encontré interesante. ¿Es un oficio imputable para un presidente resistir el impeachment? Martin Liederman enseña derecho constitucional y separación de poderes en el Georgetown Law Center. Trabajó como adjunto de asesor general en el Departamento de Justicia, Oficina de Consejo Legal, y como asesor en OLC. Y en 2008, junto a David Barron, publicó un artículo en el Harvard Law Review de dos partes examinando el poder y la autoridad del Congreso para regular el conducto del comandante en chef de guerra. Nuestro último orador es Neil Eggleston. Es un socio de litigio en la oficina de Washington de Kirkland &amp; Ellis. Fue consejo legal de la Casa Blanca para el presidente Obama, consejo adjunto de el presidente Clinton. Trabajó como adjunto general de la Comisión de Representantes de la Cámara de Representantes para investigar la cuestión de la corte de contra Irán. Y también fue asesor de U.S., juez Jones.
Para establecer el escenario para la discusión de estos temas, voy a hablar de la historia. Y tuve desayuno con mis abogados de derecho esta mañana y uno de ellos me recordaba a otro que había nacido en 1987 cuando el otro abogado de derecho había terminado su mandato. Así que no estoy hablando de conocimiento personal sobre los eventos que rodearon el impeachment de el presidente Andrew Johnson. Pero he leído sobre el tema más de fuentes que Wikipedia. Y uno de los que recomendaría a ustedes es el libro de Justicia Renquist llamado Grand Inquests. Y antes de eso, había un libro escrito en 1973 por Raoul Berger llamado Impeachment: Los problemas constitucionales. Y otra vez, una persona joven me dijo recientemente: ¿Quién era Raoul Berger? Bueno, Raoul Berger fue un amigo que hizo investigación extensa en la historia legal durante casi 50 años, comenzando en los inicios de los años sesenta. Me convertí en amigo de su cuando él era un pollo de primavera de 1984. Y solo recientemente pasó de hace diez o quince años. Pero, ¿qué provoqué su escritura ese libro? Puede pensar, como lo hice originalmente, oh, esto tenía algo que ver con Nixon y Watergate. No, no lo hizo. Raoul se preocupó, creo, porque el evento más reciente fue que el congresista Gerald Ford presentó una resolución para impejar a Justicia Warren O Douglas. Así que hay bastante historia en este país de impeachment. Voy a agregar un comentario. Cuando fui juez general, tuvimos que involucrarnos en inmigración, preguntas sobre dos juzgados federales, uno de los cuales, Thomas Porteous, fue eventualmente acusado, convicto y retirado por el Senado de Estados Unidos. Y en mi primer o aproximadamente segundo año en la Corte, fui uno de los únicos juegados de la Corte Fifth que sentó el apelio de la condena de juez Walter Nixon, quien fue acusado y convicto por perjuicio, insistió en sus derechos y fue acusado y retirado por el Senado de Estados Unidos. Y eso dio lugar a un caso interesante llamado Nixon v. Estados Unidos, que no es Richard Nixon, sino Walter Nixon. Y Walter Nixon contendió que no podía ser acusado en el Senado de Estados Unidos por un comité de menos de todo el Senado. Perdió. Y el presidente... Justicia Renquist declaró para la mayoría de la Corte que la mayoría de los temas que rodean el impeachment son cuestiones políticas no justiciables. Y leyendo Justicia Story o el paper Federalist, uno está inclinado a pensar que la mayoría de los temas que rodean el impeachment son de hecho cuestiones políticas no justiciables por buena razón. Como dijo Alexander Hamilton, "son conflictos de interés inherentes" porque el poder de impecho no es el poder de convicto criminalmente por nada. Y, por lo tanto, un jefe de cargo que es impecho puede ser acusado. Y si un organismo judicial, como la Corte Suprema, se involucara, sería un conflicto de interés inherente, habiendo presidido ambos procedimientos. El impeachment fue considerado por los fundadores, creo, como una necesidad de fianza. Tuvieron muchos ejemplos durante cientos de años en la ley inglesa para recoger de impechos que se usaban para reiniciar a los ministros del rey. Algunos fueron llevados por buenas razones, muchos no por buenas razones. Y, por lo tanto, la noción de impeachment se oculta con mucho cuidado en la Constitución de Estados Unidos. Dicho esto, es un esfuerzo político inherente y veremos esto en lo que pasó con Andrew Johnson. La mayoría de nosotros hemos estudiado a Andrew Johnson como un comentario a la asesinato de Lincoln y una breve transición entre Lincoln y Ulysses S. Grant y el paso de los amendamientos de reconstrucción. Johnson, había buena razón por la que fue vicepresidente. Fue uno de los pocos demócratas que no estaba a favor de la secesión. Era un Tennesseeano. Lincoln lo designó el gobernador interno de Tennessee mientras la Unión estaba prevaleciendo y lo convocó como vicepresidente. Desafortunadamente, tenía ideas mucho diferentes sobre la reconstrucción que los republicanos que habían tomado dos tercios de la Cámara y el Senado después, bueno, en 1866, supongo. Y casi dentro de unos pocos meses comenzaron a planear cómo imputar a Andrew Johnson porque él mantenía veto en la legislación de reconstrucción, entre otras cosas. Se estableció un comité para investigar posibles motivos de impeachment, algunos de los cuales tenían que ver con su conducta personal. El comité no fue a ninguna parte. Uno de los abogados me recordaba esta mañana que se estableció un segundo comité. Ese comité no fue a ninguna parte. Finalmente, Andrew Johnson les proporcionó un tema. ¿Qué fue eso? Disminuyó al secretario de Guerra, Stanton, quien creía que había estado filtrando información a sus oponentes políticos en este momento, los republicanos radicales. Y había suspendido a Stanton en 1867, pero luego lo volvió a asumir porque no podía encontrar una sustitución. Y luego, en principios de 1868, sintió obligado a despedir a Stanton, pero quería designar un sucesor inmediatamente. Así que sabiendo que este fue un caso que iba a entrar en las Corte de Estados Unidos sobre una pregunta sobre el Acto de Estadualización. ¿Cuál era el Acto de Estadualización? El Congreso había aprobado, sobre el veto de Johnson, una ley que decía que cualquier persona designada por el presidente con el consejo y el consentimiento del Senado sólo podría ser retirada por el presidente con el consejo y el consentimiento del Senado. Seistiños más tarde, la Corte Suprema estaría de acuerdo en que ese tipo de ley era unconstitutional como cuestión de separación de poderes, pero no se decidía en ese momento. Así que cuando Johnson despedía a Stanton en febrero de 1868, tres días después, los republicanos se duelen sobre eso e impejaron a Stanton. Y diez días después, presentaron artículos, once artículos de impeachment al Senado de Estados Unidos, nueve de los cuales tenían que ver con el abuso del Acto de Estadualización. Uno de los que se quejó como un acto imputable fue que el presidente Johnson había estado maltratando al Congreso, esencialmente. Johnson rápidamente asambleó un equipo de defensa. El periodo de respuesta y rechazo, que se habla en la Constitución, fue corto. Uno de los miembros del equipo de defensa de su fue el asesor general, quien se resignó para tomar esa responsabilidad. Otro miembro del equipo de defensa de su fue Benjamin Curtis. Benjamin Curtis escribió la discusión en Dread Scott. Él es el único miembro de la Corte Suprema que haya resignado en principio como resultado de esa decisión. Sin duda, tenía visiones bastante diferentes de las de el presidente Johnson sobre la cuestión de la reconstrucción, pero entró para defenderlo. También había otros abogados eminentes. Durante el juicio, uno de los miembros del equipo de defensa se enfermó gravemente. Esa persona estaba supuesta haber ofrecido testigos significativos. Los republicanos eran una mayoría dominante en el Senado de Estados Unidos. El equipo de defensa pidió una continuación de cuarenta y ocho horas. Se les dio básicamente medio día. Aunque el juez general Chace predice el juicio de impeachment, las reglas para llevar el juicio no estaban exactamente de acuerdo con Hoyle porque era ambiguo si el Senado podía overruler las decisiones del juez general y de hecho lo hicieron en varias ocasiones, diciendo que el presidente no podía ofrecer la evidencia que buscaba ofrecer. Así que fue un procedimiento muy interesante. Había algunas preguntas levantadas, creo, por el equipo de defensa sobre si se les estaba dando lo que llamamos "proceso de debido proceso de la ley". Creo que necesito empezar a concluir mis comentarios. Finalmente, como probablemente conozcan, escapó el impeachment por un voto. Siete republicanos terminaron votando en contra del impeachment. En el aftermath, hubo varios cargos de voto comprado, el presidente tratando de obtener apoyo, los republicanos radicales tratando de obtener apoyo de otros. Y algunos años después, de hecho, no muchos años después, Andrew Johnson fue... Muchas de las personas que votaron por el impeachment dieron cuenta de que fue un desavío político, que si hubiera logrado, habría fatalmente debilitado el poder de la presidencia. Ahora, solo para poner un poco más de punto en algunos paralelos o comparaciones con el momento presente, notaría que los artículos de impeachment se ocuparon del Acto de Estadualización, pero de hecho, esos fueron un máscara, en mi opinión, para los problemas reales que tenían que ver con la administración de la reconstrucción, con desacuerdos políticos El voto estaba completamente en base partidaria. Andrew Johnson fue impecho en menos de un año de cuando se iban a llevar a cabo las elecciones nacionales. Así que la gente decía: ¿Por qué preocuparse? Se irá de cargo. Ulysses S. Grant está en los alas. ¿Qué estamos tratando de hacer? Y finalmente, tenía serios argumentos constitucionales en su nombre. Número uno, que ni siquiera violó ese estatuto. Número dos, que ese estatuto probablemente era unconstitutional. Una pieza de evidencia que no se permitía admitir fue que todo su gabinete, junto con el secretario de Guerra aprobado, Stanton, le había aconsejado a veto el Acto de Estadualización, pero no se permitía admitir eso. Así que hay mucho que decir sobre este episodio como demostrando las dificultades, los peligros políticos y las amenazas para la presidencia que existen en la naturaleza del impeachment y lo que otros miembros del panel hablarán sobre sobrevivir a las preguntas congresistas. Gracias.
Es un honor seguir a un gran juez de un gran circuito. Quiero también agradecer a la Federación de los Demócratas por nos unir. No puedo pensar en otra organización en Washington que no solo respalde discusiones sobre temas clave de derecho constitucional, pero consiste y esconderamente esfuerza en asegurar que el panel que está discutiendo tiene una composición balanceada. Así que, dado que sospecho que algunos de nosotros podrían tener un poco de discusión espírita más tarde, el crédito se le da a la Federación de los Demócratas. Ahora, para darles un panorama un poco más amplio, en ese momento concebimos este panel. Por supuesto, ya hay numerosas batallas en marcha entre el Congreso y el ramo ejecutivo. En el nivel operativo habían batallas involucradas, deberíamos decir, un proceso de supervisión bastante vigoroso y ambas batallas son bastante partidarias y no, en mi opinión, al menos muy animadas por impulsos institucionales. Ahora, por supuesto, esas batallas son tan antiguas como nuestra república, pero la intensidad y la extensión son bastante remarquables. Para decirlo con claridad, en lo que respecta al Congreso, estos días no hay simplemente una sola agencia ejecutiva de ramos, un departamento que maneja temas de política exterior y domesticana. No se está luchando de un acto de malfezioni a otro. A riesgo de sonar demasiado humoroso, diría, dado que la administración de Trump no parece haber obtenido control de la mayoría de la maquinaria del gobierno. Me parece un poco peculiar que todos los departamentos y agencias hayan comenzado a ser responsables por sí mismos, pero tal vez algo notable sucedió aquí. Otro detalle interesante para mí y algo deprimente es lo que llamaría relativo durf o la enfasis del interés institucional largo de la Corte en muchas batallas. Esto no es como se suponía que iban a ser. Durante siglos teníamos grandes líderes congresistas de ambos partidos que intentaban, además, por supuesto, ser políticos, vindicar lo que llamaríamos prerogativas institucionales o artículo uno. En tiempos modernos, gente como Robert Byrd de Virginia del Norte, Ted Kennedy de Massachusetts y, diría, Mitch McConnell de Kentucky se acuerdan. Y eso es exactamente lo que esperaban los Framers, porque esperaban que las consideraciones institucionales lubricaran la arquitectura de la arquitectura de la separación de poderes, que el ramo se protege celosamente de su turf y incluso trata de invadir el turf de los demás ramos. Creo que es un poco triste. Me estoy repitiendo, no es totalmente cierto más. Por ejemplo, estamos solo unos días de un argumento espíritu de la Corte en la Corte de DACA. Estoy notando que los demócratas congresistas eran bastante a favor de la administración de Obama, tanto el ejercicio de DACA como el de DACA, a pesar del hecho de que ambos estaban involucrados, en mi opinión, cuando los británicos se llamaban suspendiendo el poder, no el ejercicio de la discripción prosecutoral de Ronan Mil, sino el poder de detener completamente el enfoque en la aplicación de un artículo particular. No solo los Framers rechazaron ese tipo de autoridad, pero, para decirlo con suavidad, seriamente desafían el poder congresista. ¿Cuál es el punto de pasar la legislación en cualquier cuestión cuando el presidente puede ignorar cualquier estatuto que quiera? Y no le sucedió, lo que sucedió a Andrew Johnson. Y sin embargo, los demócratas congresistas estaban completamente de acuerdo. Ahora, a nivel más conceptual, hemos escuchado recientemente afirmaciones, más prominentes de la presidenta Pelosi, que yo diría que desafían la arquitectura de la separación constitucional de los poderes, que supone que todos los tres ramos del gobierno federal son co-equal, diferentes poderes, por supuesto, pero co-equal. Algunos de ustedes pueden haber escuchado que Pelosi refería a el Congreso varias veces como el ramo superior, que debería haber sido, en mi opinión, algo que descomotivó a los Framers. Los Framers, como sabemos, estaban bastante preocupados por la supremacía legislativa, incluso esperaban eso porque pensaban que la legislación no sería el ramo más poderoso. Debieron mucho de un debate en Philadelphia para descubrir cómo dar suficiente autoridad a los demás ramos para lidiar con esto, pero ciertamente no estaban emocionados por Así que es deprimente para mí que las preguntas difíciles, cuánto poder tiene el artículo uno versus el artículo dos y qué pasa cuando llega al conflicto, se parece a que se responde principalmente completamente estos días, impulsado por consideraciones partidarias, dependiendo de qué partido político se desee. Y ahora estamos en el medio de un peaje. Hay una estancia de las batallas de la que el juez Jones estaba hablando en términos de un primer impeachment presidencial. Y ahora tenemos el impeachment de la Cámara de Representantes dirigida por los demócratas. Para decirlo más claramente, casi pura y dura impeachment del presidente Trump. No un acontecimiento sin precedentes. Además del presidente Johnson, teníamos dos otros presidentes. El presidente Nixon y el presidente Clinton se convirtieron en sujetos del proceso de impeachment. Y luego, por supuesto, Johnson y Clinton fueron impejados por la Cámara, pero retirados por el Senado. Nixon se resignó. Pero diría que hay algunas cosas y espero que las hablaremos más como continuemos el panel. Hay algunos aspectos de este proceso de impeachment que, en mi opinión, son bastante diferentes de lo que antes. Y por cierto, me parece que desde la perspectiva de la separación de poderes y una especie de perspectiva de responsabilidad democrática, los impeachment presidenciales son bastante diferentes de los impeachment de juzgados y oficiales de ramo ejecutivo, dado que es el presidente solo el que es elegido al cargo por toda la gente. Así que, ¿qué es peculiar sobre el proceso actual? Primero, la Cámara no votó para otorgar el proceso de impeachment hasta varias semanas del proceso después de un periodo considerable de tiempo de audiencias secretas en la permanencia de la Comisión de Inteligencia de la Cámara. E incluso después de que se hayan iniciado las audiencias de la semana pasada, la capacidad de los republicanos de la Cámara de Representantes de ir a la testigos y participar vigorosamente en el proceso sigue firmemente controlada por el presidente Schiff y los demócratas. Creo que hay problemas serios, incidentemente, como algunos de mis amigos y colegas que no están con problemas de debido proceso. No estoy convencido, técnicamente hablando, que el debido proceso se aplica a los procedimientos de impeachment. Pero creo que estos son problemas porque ciertamente son inconsistentes de siglos de práctica angloamericana y las normas fundamentales de justicia. Para mí, importa el hecho de que la revisión judicial, como señaló el juez Jones, no toca la mayoría de los aspectos del proceso de impeachment, no significa que no hay normas constitucionales aplicables. Y eso también causa que el impeachment sea aún más polarizado que lo que sería de otro modo. Solo decir brevemente que hay, al menos en mi opinión, algunos problemas de mérito. ¿El comportamiento del presidente se satisface con los crímenes graves y desmentidos como cuestión de ley? Olvidemos los hechos. Espero que nos disculpen sobre esto, pero déjenme poner dos cosas en la mesa. Primero, como en el caso del presidente Clinton y Nixon, pero algo como el caso del presidente Johnson, el presidente Trump está siendo impecho debido a su ejercicio de su poder constitucional central. Ahora, sé que algunos de ustedes pueden decir: ¿De qué hablan? Hay artículos refiriéndose al abuso de poder en el impeachment Nixon, pero diría que el conducto central, su cobertura, el break-in por el puente de entrada, no tenía nada que ver con el ejercicio de poder presidencial y la mala conducta de Clinton en la carretera tenía incluso menos que ver con ser presidente. Y sí, el comportamiento de Johnson violando el Acto de Estadualización involucró, por supuesto, el descargado de sus poderes como jefe de artículo dos. Pero para mí, el hecho de que esto se basa en el ejercicio de Trump de su discreción en los poderes de asuntos de la guerra central es muy, muy significativo. Déjenme repetir lo que el juez Randolph fue amable lo suficientemente como para señalar. Para mí, el hecho de que habrán por seguro artículos de impeachment que hablan de obstruir la investigación congresista en una situación donde el presidente ha afirmado dos privilegios judicialmente bendecidos y longeados de derecho, privilegios absolutos para asesores inmediatos y para la seguridad nacional. Y la Cámara va a hacer eso sin buscar adjudicar este asunto definitivamente. De hecho, haciendo su mejor es no adjudicar este asunto definitivamente por retirar la subpoena a el señor Kupferman y tratar de mover el caso, que está ahora ante el juez Leon. Para mí es bastante sorprendente. Déjenme añadir una nota no partidaria, aunque lo voy a repetir, lo que el juez Jones dijo sobre el artículo de impeachment de Andrew Johnson, si no puedo evitarlo porque contenía algunos cargos tontos. Y voy a leer el artículo muy, muy del que el juez Jones estaba hablando. Así que dio discursos libres que fueron contumaces. Y la cita es que intentó traer el desgracia, el ridículo, el odio, el contemnismo y el reproche al Congreso de Estados Unidos y traicionó el desgracia y el ridículo a la presidencia por sus palabras y acciones mencionadas. Así que, si recuerdo correctamente, el Senado en realidad rechazó esos artículos sin tratarlos, pero muestra que el impeachment tiende a ser un negocio malo. Gracias.
Yo también me gustaría agradecer a la Federación Federal y al juez Randolph, juez Jones, David y Neil por ser capaces de ser parte de este panel muy importante y de tiempo. Tengo que confesar que a unos 12:30 de la noche pasada, apagué la internet, ¿es eso lo que se llama apagarla? Y tuve que básicamente romper mis comentarios para hoy porque leí los comentarios de el asesor general de la noche pasada y él dijo todo lo que iba a decir. Bueno, así que con la indulgencia del juez Randolph, aunque quiero, espero que no vaya demasiado lejos con el tiempo. Creo que es importante responder porque estaba hablando sobre los temas de este panel y porque su discurso tendrá y debería recibir atención. Pensé que solo daría un par de comentarios cortos, pero obviamente es el tipo de cosas que garantizaría su propio panel, de hecho, su propia conferencia. Su discurso fue enfrentado con una ovación emocionante. Probablemente muchos de ustedes estuvieron allí. Y tengo que confesar que esto me confundió un poco porque, después de todo, me hubo llevado a creer que el originalismo y la adherencia cercana al texto eran artículos de fe de la mayoría de los miembros de la Federación Federal. Y sin embargo, aquí muchos de ustedes están en sus pies, compartiendo una visión ejecutiva que habría sido irreconocible a los Framers, aunque no sé si Mike McConnell está fuera de esta multitud. Él está hablando ahora y Mike está escribiendo un libro sobre el poder ejecutivo en sus orígenes y estoy muy dispuesto a leerlo. Supongo que me disagreeo mucho, pero siempre aprendo una enorme cantidad de trabajo de Michael que afirma poderes presidenciales, prerogativas y inmunidades que están completamente deshaciéndose del texto. ¿Dónde encuentras privilegio ejecutivo? Inmunidad testimonial que afirmó el asesor general que la procesión de guerra del presidente "no puede ser dirigida por un régimen legal preexistente", aunque lo ha sido desde el inicio. Y además, sus comentarios, creo, o su visión del presidente son profundamente inconsistentes con siglos de historia y las prácticas de la Corte Suprema precedentes. El grupo de ustedes continúa pensando que esas viejas modalidades son relevantes para la interpretación constitucional. Así que espero que haya un compromiso de la Federación Federal, en particular en los términos que ustedes, justamente, championan sobre la interpretación constitucional con los comentarios del asesor general. Pero antes de pasar adelante, había algo más que me disturbaba y a muchas otras personas sobre el discurso y pensé que me estaría ocurriendo que respondiera brevemente a una pregunta que el asesor general preguntó sobre aquellos a los que se refería como "el otro lado". No... Estoy preocupado por esa referencia. Supongo que se refería a gente como yo mismo, aunque no siento que esté de lado. Expresó la ofensiva de que nosotros, del otro lado, acusamos a esta administración de deshacer normas constitucionales y ir a la guerra contra la regla de la ley. Según él, a menudo pregunta a sus amigos del otro lado: ¿A qué se refiere? Y sus amigos responden con estares vacíos. No estoy seguro de qué eso dice sobre sus amigos, pero esta mañana, un miembro de la Federación Federal prominente y un muy fino académico ofreció este ejemplo como respuesta a la pregunta del asesor general. ¿Cómo si el presidente de Estados Unidos desarrolla la diplomacia de la nación a su asesor personal? Un hombre que concede que actuaba a su deber de lealtad al presidente en su capacidad individual para el propósito de aprovechar la valiosa ayuda militar y otro apoyo crucial en orden de presionar a una nación extranjera a anunciar en CNN una investigación criminal de su oponente probable. on CNN a criminal investigation of his likely opponent in the forthcoming election? Or when the president publicly declares he has tremendous power to respond if China doesn't do what we want, namely start an investigation into the Bidens? Or when he attacks career diplomats, urges the exposure of whistleblowers, tries to control DOJ and FBI criminal investigations concerning himself and those close to him? When he meets, when he insists that no other persons be present nor any even transcript be made of his meetings with Vladimir Putin shortly before affirming Putin's view, contrary to the American intelligence community's findings, that Russia had nothing to do with the interference with the election? Accusing countless legislative and law enforcement officers of treason when he's not busy taunting them with schoolyard references to their physiques? The list really does go on and on. That's just the last few days. I think most of you would agree, and some of you, I think this is very important, some of you have publicly said so, and unabashedly, much to your credit, that there's plenty of shredding of constitutional norms on a daily basis, if you only know where to look for it. And this previously unthinkable conduct has become, I think, the new norm, or at least the new normal. I just want to add one more example that troubles me of norm shredding. When learning about this blatant abuse of presidential authority related to the Ukraine, the subversion of American foreign policy to personal ends, and this open insult on the integrity of US elections, the president's Attorney General and Secretary of State, as far as we know, and this may not be the full story, apparently took no steps to end that practice. Contrast that with what we now saw not so long ago, when John Ashcroft and 30 other high-level DOJ officials, some of whom are likely in this room or attending this conference, threatened to collectively resign in protest in the middle of an election year, rather than be party to what they saw as a systematic violation of presidential obligations. I say, I make these remarks very much in sadness and in deep concern rather than in anger, and certainly not as a gotcha point. I hope that we will have our hospital room moment, maybe with many of you in the audience sometime soon. So my task here today to turn to the less contentious matters, perhaps, the law, is to mostly be descriptive and to give you and the audience some sense, things are coming so fast and furious, about three things. The first, very briefly, is a very important Supreme Court opinion, case now pending that many of you know about, that will actually involve Cannon Shamagian, Noel Francisco, and Paul Clement, all arguing with Paul on the other side he was appointed by the court. The Sela case involving the constitutionality of the CFPB's removal provisions. The second thing I'll talk about is the series of cases involving congressional oversight of the president and subpoenas. And then finally, a few words at the end about the lurking issues that aren't yet in the courts and may never be, but to my mind, and Neil's, I think, probably, are the most important, which is lurking executive privilege questions, to which we're very sympathetic. Both Neil and I were government lawyers, and we actually are quite, I joked at the outset, but I'm actually quite a big believer in significant presidential prerogatives, albeit subject to congressional or statutory checks. And so the executive privilege questions, it strikes me, are important and probably won't be resolved by the courts, and I'll have some words about that. So let's start with Sela. Statute provides, by the Dodd-Frank Act, as many of you know, the president may not remove the director of the CFPB except for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. We often refer to this as for cause or for good cause. Now Justice, then Judge Kavanaugh wrote a dissent in the D.C. Circuit, I won't go into detail, most of you know this, suggesting that the fact that this was a single member, not a multi-member commission, made this unconstitutional, even if a multi-member commission with the exact same removal provisions was constitutional, which is the currently governing law. I don't think this distinction, frankly, has any basis in text or original understanding. It's purely functionalist. Now, I'm a functionalist, so that's okay with me. I don't agree with Justice Kavanaugh, but I do think it's notable, and I look forward to the originalist and textualist briefs from many of you writing in behalf of the CFPB in the case, but I'm not sure it'll make a difference. I think the court will likely, but not certainly, say that this is unconstitutional. Of course, what's really at stake here is what Attorney General Barr said last night, namely, the very fact of independent agencies, it won't be, it won't be resolved in this case. But ultimately, Justice, Attorney General Barr's argument that if Congress tries to vest the power to execute the law on someone beyond the control of the president, it contravenes the framers' clear intent to vest the power in a single person, would, if accepted by the court, mean a radical change in American governance. Everyone agrees the president must retain some control to make sure that the officials can faithfully execute the law. And a good cause standard accomplishes that, as the Morrison case held. But actual power to direct and to remove the officer, if she exercises discretion in a manner inconsistent with the statute, consistent with the statute but different from what the president would prefer, that would mean the end of the independent agency, something that Chief Justice Rehnquist, Justice O'Connor, unceremoniously rejected, along with all but one other justice, in the 1980s in Boucher and Morrison. And it's easy to see why. Imagine a President Trump or a president that you might like less than President Trump making decisions, directing decisions on the nation's campaign finance laws, or access to the media, or adjustment of the nation's monetary policy to advance his or her political electoral prospects. You don't really have to imagine it. We're seeing it now, if the president wants to do just that. Okay, oversight and subpoenas, this is the main issue to which, that I'll address. And here, I'm going to go sort of rapid fire. I apologize, but if you have any, we can, we can get into it in the Q and A and afterwards if you're interested. There's six cases now being litigated that implicate questions of congressional oversight of the president and related questions. That doesn't even include the Kupferman case to which David referred, because I think that will be dismissed by Judge Leon either on mutinous or no cause of action grounds quite quickly. There's motions by both sides, the House and the president, to do so. I think he will agree with that. Most of them involve efforts by the House, and in one case, a New York grand jury, to obtain Donald Trump's personal tax bank and financial records for many reasons, but the most important ones are those cited by late Chairman Cummings, especially to see whether the president has undisclosed conflicts of interest that may impair his ability to make impartial policy decisions. What explains his inclination to accommodate, laud, capitulate to strongmen such as Erdogan and Putin? Perhaps nothing, maybe the documents will show that, perhaps something else. The case that's further, that's not me, is it? The case that's furthest along in these is Trump versus Vance, the one that you know that the cert petition was filed this week, which doesn't involve the House itself. There, the claim, the theory is that states, grand juries, are categorically precluded not only from incarcerating, not only trying, not only indicting the president, but from actually investigating his crimes, or whether he was involved in anyone else's crimes, in his personal capacity. Judge Katzman's opinion for the Second Circuit, I think, is airtight. I suspect the court might grant cert on this, just in deference to the president, but I will be surprised if this gets any or many votes. I think it's a radical claim that even the Department of Justice is not supporting for reasons that we can get into later. I want to move quickly ahead. More important are the four other cases. In one of them, the House Ways and Means Committee is suing the Department of Commerce to require it to comply with the law that says it shall furnish the committee with any taxes, tax returns, if they're requested. The other three cases involve parties who are willing to respond to House subpoenas or House requests. Deutsche Bank for the president's bank records, Mazers for his accounting records, and the state of New York, who under a new New York law would give the House committees Trump's state tax records if and when the committees ask for them. They haven't done so yet. In the last case, Trump's suit is now against the House, actually, that he wants an injunction in his personal capacity against them asking New York to share the records. Mazers and Deutsche Bank, Mazers out of the D.C. Circuit, Deutsche Bank out of the Second Circuit, are the furthest along. Mazers, I think, will be, there will be a petition in that very soon. I think it will be granted, I hope on expedited briefing. I don't know what the court will do. This is the one in which Judge Rao gave a dissent. The Ways and Means versus DOC and Trump versus Ways and Means cases are still awaiting nonmerits rulings from Judges McFadden and Nichols respectfully. I don't think those will be the ones that get to the court. It's important to stress at the outset, Trump is not asserting executive privilege in any of these cases. Instead, the arguments are that the House is absolutely disabled from obtaining information about the president, even in his personal capacity, and even when a third party is willing to provide such information voluntarily. There are three variations of the argument, very quickly. The first offered by both Trump and DOJ is that outside the impeachment context, Congress can only investigate anyone or anything for purposes of deliberating upon possible legislation, not to inform itself or the public about the conduct of current officials, not to discover whether they're subject to conflicts of interest, not to deter officials from wrongdoing, and that both the courts and Congress can conclude Congress doesn't have a generally permissible legislative purpose. It's a very radical argument, I think, and I've written about it, we can talk about it later. Second, Trump, not DOJ, argues further, this means Congress can never investigate the president, at least outside of impeachment, because Congress can never legislate concerning the president's personal finances, not even to impose disclosure requirements. This would mean that many current statutes are unconstitutional, that every president has complied with. It would also mean that all the famous congressional investigations that you're familiar with, right, the Irvin Committee in 1973, Iran-Contra and the like, Congress never had any constitutional authority to engage in any of those, even though no one at the time thought to make such an argument. Third, Judge Rao, in her dissent in Mazers, contends Congress may not investigate, and certainly may not compel testimony or documents, with respect to any constitutional officers, not just presidents, but judges, executive branch officers, and the like, unless it first triggers impeachment proceedings. That it has to do something with respect to impeachment before it can investigate the wrongdoing of any officers of the United States. I don't think this will pick up any votes. It didn't even secure Judge Katz's on the ambon panel. But I do think this, excuse me, the Supreme Court will take up the Mazers case and possibly the Deutsche Bank case if the Second Circuit issues its decision soon, which I hope it will do. Then there are cases where the House subpoenas current or former officials to testify, and in those cases, the Department of Justice is making this claim of absolute testimonial immunity with respect to certain close advisers of the president and former close advisers of the president, such as Donald McGahn. In the McGahn case, which is the one furthest along, the Office of Legal Counsel, including when I was there, although I was recused from the case, has made, has been making a version of this argument and making it stronger and stronger and stronger for about the last 40 years. It sort of emanates, it first appeared in public, anyway, on March 12, 1973, when President Nixon, this is at the very beginning of his second term, was trying to preclude testimony by then counsel John Dean and former aide Dwight Chapin. And he wrote that "under the doctrine of separation of powers, the manner in which the president exercises his powers is not subject to questioning by another branch of government at all. And therefore, it's," he said, "obviously, it's equally appropriate that members of my staff not be so questioned, because they're just an extension of me and Congress can't investigate me." As I mentioned at the end, that position lasted seven weeks for the president. He gave in after seven weeks. The court may resolve this question later in the context of the McGahn case, or a case against, if the House subpoenas Kellyanne Conway or some other official who's making this claim, but I don't think it will be resolved during the impeachment proceedings, maybe not even during this term of President Trump's presidency. I do think it's very important, and I think it's wrong for reasons we can discuss, this absolute immunity claim. And that leads to my final topic, which is what's underlying in, and what troubles me the most, and I think Neil as well, probably everyone on the panel, is that even if there's not absolute immunity, what folks such as John Bolton, or Mick Mulvaney even, or others would be asked to testify about in this context are things that we agree should be confidential almost all of the time. They're at the core of what we would think of as executive privilege, communications with foreign officials, communications with high-level national security aides and the White House counsel. I'm a big believer in keeping those communications confidential most of the time. I was very troubled by the leaks, for instance, of, much as I hated the substance of them, of the leaks of the president's communications with the Australian Prime Minister and the like. I don't think that's right, and I think it's very, very destructive. There is this issue, though. It's coming up now in the context of impeachment. And one thing that's really interesting, and this is to build on what Judge Jones was saying, the tradition, even among presidents who resisted their aides and themselves providing information to Congress in other contexts, always confessed, going back to the Washington administration, in no uncertain terms, that when it comes to impeachment investigations, of course, the House is entitled to everything within the executive branch, all of the, all of the information, all of the documents. Okay, wrapping up. President Polk wrote that the republic would be, the safety of the republic would be the supreme law, and the power of the House in the pursuit of the object would penetrate into the most secret recesses of the executive departments, and Andrew Johnson did not assert any kind of privilege. His communications with his aides were freely part of the impeachment proceeding, interestingly, and that until Nixon, that was the case. And like I said, even Nixon gave in under pressure seven weeks after he asserted this, and long before even there was an impeachment proceeding at play. So I'm worried about executive privilege, but it might be outweighed by the need of the House to investigate. And I want to say that I don't think these executive privilege questions, which I think are the most important, will probably be resolved by the courts. They're being resolved in other ways, first of all, possibly, at least in some administrations, like Johnson, like Nixon, by voluntarily allowing the conversations. After all, the president says everything was pitch perfect, right? He wants you to read the transcript, right? Well, let's read all the transcripts, right? Once you've let this out, it might get out there. And even when the executive branch is, or the president is trying to keep officials from testifying, what we're seeing is really remarkable. White House Counselor Chipolone directed all parties not to cooperate, saying that the House's impeachment proceedings were unconstitutional and baseless. And yet, many people are voluntarily doing so. Now, they're not talking about their communications with the president yet, but they might. And it's that sort of thing, people coming forward and resisting when they know that very severe wrongdoing is going on in the executive branch, and there's, and the president isn't making things available to Congress, that will probably be the way that much of this gets out in the public, as it has already. And I just wanted to make one slight correction to Judge Jones, but I taught it wrong for years, and I think most of us do. President Johnson did not remove Edwin Stanton. He tried to remove Edwin Stanton, but Stanton stayed in office, literally stayed in the office. His replacement acting secretary, Lorenzo Thomas, couldn't get in the building. Stanton locked him out and continued acting as Secretary of War. Talk about the deep state, right? What's that, Judge?
He did not continue acting. He was not allowed to continue acting.
Who?
Stanton.
And Johnson issued communications to the president.
Maybe I'm wrong. Okay, maybe we'll debate this. I thought Stanton remained in the building, as far as I know. It's a better story, anyway.
And you know what? That's just like the protesters who took over the president's office at Columbia University, but they didn't become the president.
No, I'm not.
Because he littered the office.
I agree. And I actually think, I actually don't think Stanton did the right thing, so I didn't mean to suggest that, but I do think that--
May I interrupt you?
Sure.
I've had the experience as a moderator every once in a while, and a famous Harvard professor, who will go unnamed, kept going on and on and on. And he said, "The judge is looking for a gavel." And I said, "No, I'm looking for a US attorney."
Well, since I believe in the power of US attorneys to prosecute, I will sit now and talk more later.
Thank you very much. So there's a note up here, presumably written to Marty, which is underlined exclamation point. It says something like, "Please wrap up." And then below that, it says, "Please wrap up." And then in below that, it says, "Please wrap up." So anyway, I also want to thank everybody for the invitation. I've attended a couple of these, and I always appreciate the invitation. And mostly, and I think, I can't remember if my friend, Mr. Rifkin, said this or not, this organization is to be praised for having people like Marty and me appear on these panels. We recognize you don't always agree with what we say, but we're treated with respect, and we're listened to, and maybe we'll help you think through some of the issues. We don't necessarily think we're going to change your mind. I will not go as long as Marty, and I don't speak as quickly as Marty. So those of you whose ears are bleeding, I will try to slow down a little bit. The one thing, there are just a couple of comments I want to say in response to some of the things that were said, which was one is, in the spring, I teach a seminar at Harvard Law School on presidential power, and you could tell from the list of cases that Marty went through that the syllabus is going to expand once again in the spring, as these cases come down. Already, the biggest complaint from my class is that I assign them way too much work. A couple other sort of issues. I was fascinated as well by the DACA argument earlier this week. I was actually, I have to say, I was surprised that the court took the case, because it went straight from district judges to courts, to the Supreme Court, if I'm remembering correctly. And all the district judges, including Judge Bates, who's certainly not a rabble-rouser, all concluded that the determination that because of DACA, DACA was illegal, was not appropriate. But as a policy matter, if the president wanted to do it, the president could do it. There was not, everybody said, "Just go ahead and do it." And it's sort of odd that the administration essentially refused to go ahead and make the policy determination, and instead took it to the Supreme Court. And I was equally surprised, actually, that the Supreme Court took it. It seemed like something that was pretty easily solvable without getting the Supreme Court involved. Court involved. David, I just have, you know, you have your Pelosi quote about, "We're the superior branch." I just want to come back with my Trump quote, which is, "Under Article II, I can do anything I want." I'm pretty sure people in this room don't believe that. I assure you that President Obama would not have believed that as well. And finally, the only other thing I wanted to say. This is a tough crowd, if you disagree with that. So actually, since, and again, I then will race through the rest of my remarks, although I won't talk quickly. So on DACA, which was the one that took place when I was the White House counsel, various interest groups would come in and talk to the president, and they would push him, "You have to, you know, you should go big on this, you should include as many people as possible." And I was usually in the room, and he would, at some point invariably, turn and point at me and say, "I'll go as far as he lets me go." Well, that didn't work out so well. Lost before Judge Hanham, lost before the Fifth Circuit, I think you were not on the panel, if I'm remembering correctly, and I think we didn't seek en banc, because we wanted to get straight to the Supreme Court. And actually, it was ended up 4-4 in the Supreme Court, so that's the way it was resolved. So let me just talk a little bit, I'm going to talk about some of these conflicts that others have talked about in a much more practical sense. And like Marty, and probably even more than like Marty, I'm a pro-president person in these arguments. I worked for President Clinton during the Whitewater and Monica Lewinsky investigation. I argued in Ray Espy, which is probably the leading case on presidential communications and executive privilege, that was my argument in the D.C. Circuit. I argued the Lindsey case, which had to do with the attorney-client privilege, governmental attorney-client privilege, I actually lost that one. I think Judge Randolph, I can't remember, I don't, I can't remember if you were on that panel or not, actually. That's, I was thinking you were the third judge. I remember Judge Rogers and Judge Tadel, and I was thinking you were the third judge. So Judge Randolph voted against me, and I lost. And in addition—
You could argue.
Thank you, thank you. So I'm going to relay that to my clients immediately. So in addition, and this is sort of, and Marty talked about this a little bit, this issue has come up a lot about absolute immunity from executive branch officials responding to congressional testimony. The most recent opinion on that, in the Obama administration, was actually written to me in the summer of 2014, and it involved David Seamus, who at the time was head of the Office of Public Engagement, I can't remember what it was called. And he'd been subpoenaed by Chairman Issa in order to testify, and I got an OLC opinion that said that he did not have to respond, actually, in response to those. It was quite a narrow opinion, it applied to current officials. I actually think that the principles, I mean, I haven't completely thought through this, but I don't actually think the principles that at least concern me apply to former officials, the way I thought about it. And I saw this, actually, in the Clinton administration, and a number of you will probably remember this, where there are just waves of people were called up to testify in various different proceedings. I testified before Congress more than once in the Whitewater investigation. My worry about this is that Congress can essentially disable the president from performing his function if he can occupy all of his aides. The president has to work through his aides, and if he can tie up the aides, if they can tie up the aides, they can really disable the president from performing his function. I think that that is a valid issue. I haven't really thought through whether it's still valid in an impeachment inquiry, and I think, I just have to think more about that. Marty had some comments about that, I think more about that. I don't really think that the issue is all that valid, actually, with prior former officials, and so as to a John Bolton or a Don McGahn, I think that should be fairly easy. I don't know how the courts are going to come out, but I actually think that that should be fairly easy. Let me get to just a little, few more nuts and bolts issues. The Cipollone letter, Pat was my partner at Kirkland Ellis for a time. He left Kirkland, actually, when I was at the White House. I have to say, I assume Pat is not in the audience, I assume he's got important things he's doing at the moment, Pat obviously being the White House counsel. I wouldn't have sent the letter. I wouldn't have sent it for two reasons, which was, one, it was essentially a non-legal letter. I mean, David talked about assertions of privilege, it was mostly a complaint that the process is unfair. And you know, every criminal defendant sitting in jail thinks he is there because of an unfair process, and having a claim of an unfair process is not the type of privilege that is typically, excuse me, recognized. But there's probably a more practical reason that I would not have sent it, which is, I learned in the White House, and frankly, presidents typically learn in the White House, you have some control over senior advisors, you have less control over the career people, the OMB people, the NSC people, who are in the White House, their career, much less control over them. You have virtually no control over officials who are in the State Department and Department of Defense. And so the likelihood that this letter was going to be effective beyond the people quite close to the president, I think, had a very low likelihood of success, and that's exactly the way it turned out. And then we had this weird circumstance, if one person in the White House has a claim to absolute immunity from testifying, it's Mick Mulvaney, the Chief of Staff. And so for a while, he was going to join this lawsuit that was being brought, which I think of as kind of an interpleter action, to get Judge, now it's got assigned to Judge Leon, to decide sort of which of these sides he had to take. I don't, I assume Mr. Mulvaney had thought it through, but by subjecting himself to the lawsuit, he kind of had, I think, had to agree to the outcome. And the outcome might be, or might have been, he's now withdrawn himself from the litigation, but might have been a court order that he actually had to appear and testify. And unlike, in my view, Mr. Bolton, whom I think no longer has the absolute immunity from testifying, I think Mulvaney probably still does, unless it's overridden by the impeachment, you know, process, and as I say, I really haven't thought that through. But he got himself in kind of a weird position, I'm not sure why in the world he would have done it. We've talked a little bit about various different power issues, I want to just do this just for a minute. There are not that many enforcement mechanisms, actually, as you all know, that the Congress has. It has a civil contempt process, which frankly, in a matter like this, is not very effective. I assume that the theory, that Mr. Cooper, the lawyer for Kupperman, I guess he's the lawyer for Bolton, although I'm not sure that Bolton has actually joined the case, as opposed to just say, either going to join it, or say, "I'll follow the outcome," or maybe really neither. But I assume it's, in some ways, it's a form of stall, because if Judge Leon rules against him, there'll be appeal and the like. We saw this a little bit in Fast and Furious. Fast and Furious, I was not there when the litigation started, but I was there near the end. I'll tell everybody, I did everything I can to resolve that case and moot it. And the House of Representatives, Republican, obviously, at the time, would not take yes for an answer. I think we gave them every document, and they sort of kept changing the goalposts. But that litigation went on, I guess, until the Trump administration began. So particularly in an impeachment process such as this, the civil enforcement mechanism, which has to go through the courts, is really just not an effective mechanism, in my view. The second mechanism is criminal contempt. There is a statute that provides, there's a discussion sometimes about inherent contempt, I'm not going to get into that, it hasn't happened in a long time, I don't know whether it's valid anymore, but there's a criminal contempt statute, which permits Congress to refer for criminal prosecution, it's a misdemeanor, but incarceration up to 12 months permits Congress to refer to the Justice Department for prosecution, people who do not appear in response to a testimony, or do not provide documents in response to a testimony. And, you know, frankly, there have been a number of people who have refused to respond to the House Intelligence Committee. Rudy Giuliani would be one. Mr. Giuliani has absolutely no privilege not to appear, there's no claim he has no privilege not to appear. He might have an attorney-client privilege not to reveal certain communications with his client, but we know he did lots more than just talk to his client, he has absolutely no privilege not to appear, and various others, I think, have no privilege. And this is the reason that when things got, sort of looked like they were, might move towards contempt on David Seamus, that I went to the Office of Legal Counsel and got an opinion that he was exempt from appearing, and the Office of Legal Counsel opinion essentially binds the Justice Department, he could not thereafter be prosecuted. But I will tell you, anybody who doesn't have an OLC opinion exempting them will run a serious risk of prosecution. And so you're all thinking to yourself, "Well, look, what difference does it make? It's, you know, Attorney General Barr is certainly not going to authorize any investigation." Well, you know, there's going to be an election in about a year, and I don't think the statute of limitations will have run, and I think all those people need to think through to themselves, "Do I actually have a valid reason not to appear?" And frankly, I would urge, as to those people without a legitimate claim, that the House of Representatives go forward and urge a criminal contempt, or make a criminal contempt finding. And then just the last thing I want to say, and I think this will be interesting, I don't know if it's going to be used or not, but in the impeachment rules, which will apply at the, when we get, remember, impeachment takes place in front of the Judiciary Committee. When we get there, Congress has written in a provision that would permit the chairman to bar administration lawyers, I think in whole or in part, it'll never happen in whole, to the extent the administration has refused to cooperate and refused to produce various information in connection with the inquiry. As those of you who are litigators in this room know, it's actually a fairly common remedy in civil litigation, if a party refuses to provide documents in response to, you know, subpoenas, or engages some sort of obstruction of justice, it's actually a fairly common preclusion remedy, which has been written in. It'll be interesting to see whether it's actually used. I think as a legal matter, it would be perfectly appropriate, I think the chairman will have to think through, am I, if Chairman Nadler uses it, I think Chairman Nadler will have to think through, am I giving a process talking point to the Republicans that I don't particularly really need? Any event, thank you all, looking forward to the question and answer period.
Before we get to that, I'd just like to fill in a few blanks. The statute that Neil was talking about says that when a House or Senate committee, or the House or Senate refers a criminal contempt citation to the U.S. Attorney, says, "A report shall be certified," I'm quoting, "to the appropriate United States Attorney, whose duty it shall be to bring the matter before a grand jury for its action." But the Department of Justice and the OLC has long interpreted that to give prosecutorial discretion to the Attorney General and the U.S. Attorney. And there's another thing that I think, in light of all the reports that we've been reading about, and some of the remarks that have been made today, the OLC, the Office of Legal Counsel at DOJ, also has decided that the contempt of Congress statute was not intended to apply, and could not constitutionally be applied to an executive branch official who asserts the president's claim of executive privilege. And more than that, it says that, "When the president directs or endorses a noncompliance with a subpoena," and that's happened, "such as where the official refuses to disclose information pursuant to the president's decision," that the Department of Justice will not take action against that official. So that's where we are. I'd like to, first of all, if any of the members, or any of the speakers, presenters would like to comment on anybody else's remarks, or we'll go right to questions.
Judge Randolph, I appreciate that, I'll be very brief. I happen to disagree with Marty and Neil about the scope of those privileges. As far as the immediate advisor's privilege, that if I'm not mistaken, actually goes back in articulation to a 1971 OLC opinion by young William Rankwist, does not just apply in situations where you can tie up the president's advisers. There's an excellent language that was loosely referred to, I think, by Neil, that most people, our presidents, out their egos, since the president cannot command members of Congress to appear before him, they cannot command him to appear before him. So I think it applies equally. The other privilege, national security privilege, I think was best articulated in the opinion by Mike Lutick in 1989, that I had privilege to read when I was working for Boyd and Gray. It is more venerable, it predicated upon a couple of things, including the state secrets privilege, which was first asserted by Jefferson and recognized by the court in 1807. I think that those privileges are vigorous, I think if the Supreme Court ever to reach the merits, I would be stunned if both of them were rejected. And by the way, I emphatically do not agree that the impeachment reshuffles the deck in any way, it does not abolish or alter separation of powers, it's the president's policy choice, whatever he wishes to produce testimony or documents, but to me, the context does not matter. To make an obvious point, ladies and gentlemen, these are absolute privileges, there's no balancing, if they are properly invoked, unless you scrub them, it doesn't matter if it's oversight or impeachment. And my only other point to Marty would be this, the extent of presidential immunity from civil litigation, which was addressed in Paula Jones, the extent of presidential nonimmunity from investigation, that of course is reflected in the two OLC opinions, is not a bright-line test, it is a test driven by a degree of encumbrance, degree of imposition on the president. What I would say gently, if you read the Paula Jones opinion, the court clearly acknowledged that if it so happened that the president would be confronted not with a single case once in a while, but with an avalanche of cases, they might feel differently. I would just stop by noting, I don't think anybody in this room would disagree, but this particular president, whatever you think of him, has been presented with avalanche of lawsuits, investigations, and all sorts of efforts designed to impede his ability to charge his powers. I just want to keep this context in mind for all of you. Thank you.
So just very quickly, I mean, look, everybody has to remember that OLC is not a court, and it doesn't bind anybody except the Justice Department. And so in Myers, Harriet Myers and, I guess it was Josh Bolton litigation, that took place at the end of the Bush administration, Judge Bates, I mentioned him earlier, Judge Bates, Ken Starr's deputy in the Clinton independent counsel investigation, appointed by a Republican, nobody's, you know, bleeding-heart liberal, basically ruled that both Bolton and Myers had to appear before Congress, and said, "You know, what the OLC says, that's interesting, but it's got nothing to do with me. It is, they are a party to a litigation, and it's interesting, but it doesn't bind me." And Marty, you're better at cases than I am, so my recollection, and I'm going to say one more thing before I turn it to you, my recollection is that Chief Judge Howell, or maybe one of the judges in New York, similarly, in the last six months, made a very similar point, which is, the OLC opinion was cited to him or her, and the response was, "Well, you know, that's interesting as analysis by smart people, but it really has nothing to do with the judicial function."
Neil, just one sentence, that opinion specifically says, Judge Bates' opinion, that it would have been different to his national security, which unique here are two privileges working together. I can give you a precise site if you want.
I mean, that's more detailed than I remember from that case, so, look, maybe you're right, but I don't think it's because of the OLC opinion, as opposed to because, there's no doubt, OLC opinions do not bind courts. And let me just, on your last point, David, I just want to say, I was in the Clinton administration, and I know that President Trump talks about, "Nobody's ever been investigated as much as he has." Boy, look, I was there, you know, Chairman Burton sent us a dozen subpoenas, I'm pretty sure, every day, he was sued like crazy. And so I would, look, I get there have been a lot of litigation involving the president, but I'm not sure that, at first, I'm not sure comparisons work, but I'll tell you from personal experience, there was a lot raining down on the Clinton administration.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two quick points in response to David. The first is, the OLC opinion, the 2000 OLC opinion, saying the president couldn't be indicted while he was in office, did so in large part because it said that the grand jury could continue to investigate him. That's why I think that OLC argument, opinion itself, cuts against the argument in the New York case. But much more importantly, on the privilege question, I'm going to slightly disagree with David, but end in a place where I think we might agree. I mean, he said that the privilege is absolute, you know, that, it seemed to be before 1974, but the holding of US versus Nixon was that it was subject to a balancing. And in the impeachment context, the history is that the presidents have realized that the balance is on Congress's side when you get to impeachment, Washington, Polk— Washington poll, the statements are quite dramatic and quite unequivocal. But if it were really put to courts to make that balancing in an impeachment context, I'm very concerned about that prospect. This is where David and I are maybe on the same page, because the court would have to balance the need of the House in the context, and make an assessment about how serious the allegation of high crimes and misdemeanors might be, something that I think the courts will and ought to be very wary about getting involved in. And so I actually think these privilege questions will be mostly resolved outside of courts, especially in the impeachment context, and maybe not as categorically as they were under most administrations throughout most of our history.
Okay. I can't tell, the lights are so bright. Is anybody up at the microphone? Yes.
Here, no.
Yes.
Hi, Greg Dolan from University of Baltimore. I actually want to pick up where David left off on this idea of balancing, and I guess perhaps this is a question for mostly for Marty. But I guess the question is, what test do you think courts should use in order to balance? I mean, how does one figure out how important congressional need for investigation is versus whatever the president's interest in keeping information private? Because it seems to me that there is not necessarily a very good judicial standard to adjudicate it, and ultimately, if Congress is unhappy with the information being provided, it can simply, you know, go, it can impeach, or it can do some other things. As Judge Randolph began this whole thing, can reduce presidency to a single secretary responsible for answering mail only. And if there is a balancing test, for example, how does it work in other contexts when Congress wants to investigate, say, sitting judges? Could they subpoena their communications with other members of the panel or with their law clerks? So is there a judicial test, and is it only peculiar to the president or to any other official that Congress wishes to investigate?
Let me go briefly. Marty and I may or may not agree, but I do believe that balancing the needs of a two political branches, either in the oversight context or the impeachment context, is PQD, pure and simple. I'm attracted to absolute privilege because it does enable Article III to adjudicate the more structural question. And to me, I actually, we both, and say again, if this issue goes up, I think we are going to get to five, especially with two privileges working together. And one final historical point, I starkly disagree with Marty's interpretation of a Nixon case and the implications of a Nixon, main Nixon decision and other things. The privilege there was asserted for presidential communications writ large. I actually read Nixon case quite differently, the main Nixon case, for the proposition that if a more particularized assertion of national security-based privilege would have been honored. The president cannot conduct the core powers of his office, that of foreign and national security affairs. He is nothing. And I think the court would recognize that, or at least enough justices.
So we do have some common ground here in that I think it would be very difficult for courts to assess the needs of the House or the Senate in a particular impeachment case, which is why I think what the executive ought to do is what executives did for so long, which is to say that the attendance of any and every agent of government, compel them to produce all papers, public or private, official or unofficial, and testify to all facts within their knowledge, is appropriate in an impeachment proceeding. I don't think this president will abide by that. I'm not sure many modern presidents would abide by that. But I do want to say, on the other side, the president's need for absolute confidentiality that the Attorney General mentioned last night and that Neil and I, everyone up on the panel somewhat agrees with, I do think we should take account of the fact that that rationale for the privilege is being increasingly undermined by the fact that not only does the president talk about his communications with foreign officials and allow some people to talk, but we have this pattern in the executive branch that we don't see in the judiciary and Congress of close aides to the president going out and writing memoirs about their communications with the president on foreign affairs and national security matters while the president is still sitting. Nikki Haley is about to write a book about exactly that, and the president is lauding her for doing so. John Bolton might do the same. The idea that the president has to have absolute confidentiality and the confidence that those communications will never get out is a little bit hard to take, and this is on both sides of the aisle, when so many executive officials are so free to write about their experiences and their communications with the president.
Maybe they're trying to defray their legal expenses.
I think Ambassador Haley has something else in mind.
Judge, could I just raise a related issue? Thank you. So I have had, on a related issue, much of the litigation that the president has undertaken, and frankly, I think Steve Mnuchin's response to the request for the tax returns that was made pursuant to a statute, was a determination that Congress's, you know, sort of need for the material, I'm sorry, the investigation or whatever was not legitimate. I frankly have a very similar view of that, which it seems to me there ought to be an enormous discretion, enormous deference, excuse me, to Congress about whether its investigation is legitimate. And frankly, the notion that the Article II branch could render an opinion about whether the investigation is legitimate, I think that's inappropriate. I actually think that probably the judicial branch should not do it either, that that certainly has got to be something, in my view, that's committed to Congress and is all but, I would say, and nearly, I'm sure that people could come up with hypotheticals where I'd say, maybe this is a step too far, but should generally, I think, be absolutely committed to the discretion of Congress and not subject to review.
Could we have another question?
Chris Green from Ole Miss. I wanted to say a word on behalf of the non-Stanton article of impeachment against Johnson. So I agree, the Stanton stuff was ridiculous, but it was a bit more than bad-mouthing Congress. So Johnson had called Congress a so-called Congress. He had arguably incited race riots in Memphis in May 1866 and in New Orleans in July. He had encouraged people to kill other people in the streets. And I imagine, if you go back to the history in 1386, where High Crimes and Misdemeanors comes from, the impeachment, I think it was Sussex, who was basically not playing ball with a parliamentary committee. And I imagine a world where they remove Johnson in 1866, you get Reconstruction going considerably earlier. It's actually a much better world. Isn't that such, you know, wouldn't, you know, wouldn't that be a much better, more honest basis on which to remove the president? You don't like him because he's encouraging people to say that Congress isn't really a Congress until they get the South back in. Wouldn't that have been better?
Well, look, he could have gone out and burned the flag, right? I mean, that was the first article, I think, or the second article that was voted on, and it was rejected even by the radical Republican in the Senate. So I don't quite understand the argument that the president is abusing his power by, God forbid, even inciting a riot, something within the, you know, take your word for whatever he may have been inciting, but it was still speech.
Speechable speech, right? I mean, if you literally, if the president burned the flag and, like, they went out and killed 20 people.
Things were running, tempers were running very high, and one of the Republican senators, had he not had assaulted and nearly killed one of the members of the House while they were sitting there.
Okay, we'll take the next question.
Okay, so I have a question in two parts. First, Judge Jones, you recommended that we, you recommended Raul Berger to our consideration. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about Raul Berger's thoughts on executive privilege. He wrote extensively that the Constitution does not actually grant the president executive privilege. I'm also curious, Marty, you raised Attorney General Barr's speech last night, and Attorney General Barr in the speech contended that the courts should not resolve separation-of-powers issues, especially disputes between Congress and the president. And he didn't speak narrowly about privilege fights, right, because the case he cited was Morrison versus Olson, Congress's regulation of the removal power. And I'm curious just what panelists think about the idea that the courts should not get involved in resolving separation-of-powers questions. They should leave it to the branches, sort of like, I guess, the branches worked out the Tenure and Office Act problem. Congress went to impeach, president, you know, tried to remove Johnson or Stanton. Whether he successfully physically removed him from the building or not, I think is, you know, that's not the dispute I mean to get you all to, but to the question of whether that's the right process.
Start off with Raul Berger on executive privilege. I know, I have that article. I have not studied it. I do not see how any, being on the courts, which have the greatest secrecy possible, and quite often, although we have pressing matters, we don't normally have matters as pressing as the running of the free world before us or the nation. And I do not see how any office can function without a certain matter of confidentiality. So I just, I would disagree in principle. I would also, and Judge Randolph has had much more exposure to these issues than I on the D.C. Circuit, but again, as a matter of principle, I would seem to me that the executive, that it is, that the court, that every time you commit a decision like this to the Article III courts, there is less room for flexibility, compromise, and political discourse and discussion by those other branches. It's just the same as when the judiciary hauls off and rules on constitutional issues. To that extent, the political process is disabled from achieving democratically acceptable solutions. And the same thing is certainly true with regard to separation-of-powers controversies at this level of executive privilege.
Yeah.
One sentence, I agree with Judge Jones, in fact, I strongly disagree with Marty's general observation that all those privileges and various other things are not somehow originalist because they're not mentioned in the Constitution specifically. Constitution has an architecture. Constitution has all sorts of propositions that are eminently derivable from its provisions. And I cannot put it any better, Article II is completely incapable of functioning by appropriate secrecy. I would say one thing, though, I have enormous esteem of General Barr, having worked with him in his early incarnation, but I do think that many separation-of-powers issues, to the extent that they're raised in a forceful manner by one branch, not trying to achieve accommodation, have to be resolved by Article III, including the specific immunities in issue. It would be a good thing. And if it's resolved the right thing, if the president wants to accommodate, then it's clear it's accommodation. It does not set the precedent that visages the privilege.
So it's great, because we do have a lot of common ground here. I agree with the judge and with David that there is executive privilege because of the eminences and, right, emanations from the document and from our history. But I'm sorry, I know that most of you textualists and originalists will agree with Raul Berger that there is no executive privilege. But I do think there is one. I just think it's going to be very difficult to adjudicate it in this context.
You'll be happy to know that George Washington agrees with you. The Jay Treaty.
Which he thought he would have to turn over all the information to the House if they impeached him, so.
That's all, yeah. Gentlemen in the back.
Judge Randolph, thank you. This question is directed to Judge Jones or David Ribkin, whichever of the two of you feel compelled to answer. It's in response to a comment Neil Eggleston mentioned earlier, which is that without an OLC opinion, an executive official who chooses to claim executive privilege and not appear before a subpoena of the House could later be prosecuted by the same political party in a subsequent administration. My question to you is this. As an assistant, a former assistant U.S. Attorney issuing a subpoena on behalf of the executive branch in order to ensure that some penalty, a criminal penalty, imprisonment, in fact, for failure to comply with an order of the court after a motion to compel is filed, going to the third branch, the judiciary, to receive that motion, that order to compel, and a failure to follow that order results in a subpoena, excuse me, an issue for, a motion for sanctions, and that sanction order is how somebody later is criminally prosecuted or criminally punished for failure to comply. Is there any argument or mechanism to legitimize a subsequent prosecution that the House of Representatives should avail themselves in some manner of the third branch before the executive branch of another administration prosecutes for criminal contempt?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question.
For instance, if an executive official does not appear after being subpoenaed to appear before the House of Representatives.
Right.
And then a subsequent, and they don't have an OLC opinion, they haven't gone to OLC before they don't appear, but they do claim executive privilege. Neil Eggleston had made the point that a subsequent administration after the elections in 2020, let's say.
Prosecute them.
Could prosecute them criminally.
Well, without adjudicating presumably legality, what you're talking about is a situation where you'd be prosecuted for not complying or something, even though it may have been unlawful to try to get you to testify. Is that right?
I think the president would have to assert executive privilege. And I think if you were a current official who was complying with the president's assertion, whether it's right or wrong, you shouldn't be able to be prosecuted afterward. The interesting question is, the former officials who are not subject to the president's direction, if he says, "You will be violating my executive privilege," and they disagree, or if they agree, I suppose, then I think there, it's an open question, although I doubt DOJ would ever prosecute someone in that context.
Well, and let me just make my point a little clearer. Maybe I wasn't that clear. My point of the OLC opinion is that the OLC opinion binds the Justice Department, including future Justice Departments. And so when I got the opinion for Seamus, I was not worried that if President Trump won in 2016, that the Department of Justice could prosecute him because he'd gotten an OLC opinion that said he did not have to appear. I thought of it as an insurance policy. I was not suggesting that there would be no possible defenses, but anybody who doesn't get an OLC opinion that thereafter binds, and look, I don't know what happens if it's a John Yoo-style, you know, OLC opinion that sort of later discredited and withdrawn, but my point is, that's sort of an insurance policy. I'm not saying you couldn't thereafter litigate it, but you're in a much more precarious place, because it may happen after criminal charges are filed against you, and frankly, nobody wants that to happen. So that was my point.
So you've answered, you've answered your own question. I'm sorry.
Okay, I think we're out of time.
It sounds good, thank you.
Just give a hand to the panel. I think they're doing great. Thank you.